I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I would entertain a motion for moving into executive session for salary for non-union personnel, nurses' contract negotiations, and approval of executive session minutes April 29th, 2015, not for release. Could I have a motion for that?
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Burns.
So moved. Do we have a second? Mr. Mullis, thank you. We need to respond to our names, okay? Mr. Bjork.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Bonnisch.
Yes.
Mrs. Brusad.
Yes.
Mrs. Burns.
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Mullis.
Yes.
Mrs. Kane. And we will be returning. Thank you. Okay. We'll announce them during the meeting.
Sure.
All right. I'd like to call back to order our regular school committee meeting last for this particular academic year of June 24th. We've had roll call, we've had pledge of allegiance, we attended executive session, and the results of the executive session will be coming up during the meeting. Approval of items by consensus. There are six items for consideration on the consent agenda. A, the approval minutes of June 10th, 2015, regular session. C warrants G 14, R 223, and then E warrants CB 11. Could we have a motion to accept those?
Excuse me. Yes, I'm sorry. Could we separate the CB and do it separate? I think I can vote to these sped warrants, but not that. Yes, please.
Sure. Okay. So we'll just do A and C. Okay, Mrs. Brusad. So moved. Okay, second? Mrs. Carroll. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Now we'll go to payroll warrant of 617, 2015. Mrs. Bonnisch.
I have a motion to approve the payroll warrant of 617.
Okay, second, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Okay, five, yes, and two abstain. Mrs. Carroll or Mrs. Kane? Now we'll go down to sped warrants. Sped 20, 21, 22, and 23. All those in favor? Oh, wait, wait. We have a motion. We have a motion. Okay, Mrs. Bonnisch.
So moved.
Yeah, second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. I've missed that of all. I should have put that one in there. Okay. Warrants food service, 16. Do we have a motion? Oh, Mr. Bjork.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Okay, six in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. All right. And the last one is the grant from Cassett. What did I miss?
Yeah, we need CB.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. Warrants CB 11, circuit breaker 11. Mr. Bjork. Second, Mrs. Bonnisch. All those in favor? Six with one abstain. Kim, Mrs. Burns. All right. We had a notice in here also about the Cassett money. So would you like to? I'm still there. Let me see. Okay, the superintendent, would you want to say?
Sure. Yes, I just offer our thanks to Cassett for this grant, which I understand has been awarded to the district for quite a number of years. The grant is, as the letter indicates, reduced. My understanding, the grant in the past has been somewhere on the order of $10,000. So the grant is reduced. It's an unfortunate sign of, I think, our financial times. But we use this funding to help offset the salary of one of our world language teachers, Italian specifically. So we will absorb the differential within the local budget. But we thank Cassett for the funding that they have been able to provide.
Thank you. I forgot to ask in the past, when we get these kind of things, we send thank you notes?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Then could I have a motion to accept the Cassett donation, provided in the form of a grant in the amount of $5,000? Mrs. Carroll.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. As you mentioned, Mrs. Kane, this, our academic year came to a close on June 18th and June 19th for the high school. It was a great ending to the year. I had the ability to go around and wish staff and students well. And great to see activity going on right up to the end of the year. And lots of great educational games and activities happening to close out the year as well. And just our thanks to our staff and our students and our parents, administrators, for a fantastic school year. We didn't just stop, though, on the 19th. We continued our work and on the 23rd, which was Tuesday, we actually had an end-of-year retreat with all of our administrators on Monday and Tuesday, I think. And as well as next week, we have some professional development work going on in math, for elementary math teachers. I believe we have 40, close to 40, teachers that are attending that and preparing them and for the Envisions program and focusing on math practices. So some great PD. And today, we started the first of a three-day workshop on professional learning communities that's being offered by SRI. It was a great first day, I think, so. We've got a lot of PD going on between now and June 30th. And then I'm sure we'll all take a nice deep breath, enjoy some relaxing summer time.
Nice.
Yeah. And the only other thing I wanted to report, as it does fall during the summer, is the fact that I will be attending the MASSS Executive Institute, which is historically, takes place during the summer, from July 14th through the 17th down at the Cape. So it's a great few days of professional development and networking with MASSS colleagues. The other thing I wanted to highlight is the fact that I had the pleasure of attending the most recent Park Public Forum at North Shore Community College, as well as Mrs. Brusad and Mrs. Kane. Specifically, what I wanted to address is that at that time, Tom Scott, who's the executive director of MASSS, actually spoke and presented to the folks there a position paper that MASSS has developed and was recently approved by the MASSS Executive Committee. So I provided the committee with that electronically. I think it's a great document. I think that Mr. Scott did a great job of essentially sidestepping the issue of Park versus MCAS and spending time talking about what high-quality assessment means and what we, as superintendents and school districts, need from assessment, particularly around our assessments being more formative than summative in nature. And the last thing I just point out, too, is that you have also received a copy from me, a copy of the report that was provided by Ms. Peters, the five-year Niasq report. Where in the fifth year of the 10-year cycle halfway point, we do a mid-cycle report. That report's been included. Ms. Peters is here, certainly if anybody had any questions. But it just basically updates Niasq on the status in terms of the recommendations that were provided back in 2010.
I just had, I thought was interesting, when we were at the Park, I honestly, at this point, have no idea where I stand on it. We, they started out and they had people they had invited to come before that board. And ironically enough, the people they invited were all in favor of Park. So then I thought that we weren't going to hear any other sides. You know, we weren't going to hear about MCAS or anything. But all of a sudden, we, boy, did we start to hear. They had people twice call for Mr. Chester, Mr. Mitchell Chester's resignation. It was incredible that, I don't want to, it was a very emotional issue once it got to the second set of people. So they were different people, parents or a number of parents. There were two parents from Wilmington, which was fascinating. And they spoke very articulately and they did us proud. So I just want to comment on, thank you for going to the two parents and making your view known. But it was so confusing. So my one question is, do we have to vote on this again for next year? What happens next year?
Remains to be seen.
Decision next time, maybe September? Is that what you might just do?
The Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is scheduled, originally, we heard, was scheduled to vote in October. Recently, in May, I heard from Associate Commissioner Jeff Wolfson that October's meeting will probably be focused on the discussion of all the input that they've received and all the information that's been requested by the Board in helping to make the decision, and that the vote might not actually occur until November.
Yes. I'm sorry. I just, a bit of question, because even with this year's, those districts who participated in this year's Park assessment, results were expected at the end of June and now have been, if I'm correct in this, are delayed until the fall, correct?
I think that the results were always anticipated for the fall, but I don't know that there was anticipation there was going to be a significant delay from the date at which MCAS is available. That's what's been a little bit of a surprise to people. It's coming out after the MCAS.
Well, you know how I feel about Park. I understand the basis of assessments and I think the question, when I attended the Bunka Hill Community College, I think the main concerns were the number of assessments our students undertake. Not that, you know, I don't think the conversation pertained to the need of assessments, because I think we all know and I feel that assessments are necessary in order to drive better practices in learning. But I think what is, I think it's become such a Park-MCAS thing, because this is what is on our doorstep as being implemented, which I think propels those, that conversation as to what good assessments, the position that, you know, you've always taken, what drives good assessments in student achievement. And I think that's where the heat and passion comes from, because it is on our doorstep. And frankly, it's not, you know, it's not an adequate assessment for students where I don't think it encapsulates it accurately.
Did yours talk about, because they talked about the fact that whereas MCAS gives you copies of the questions so that you can use them afterwards, that the Park does not at this point? And then later in the discussion, someone else said that actually Park eventually is going to let you see what the questions are. But for now, no, they're not doing the questions.
I just find that a little perplexing in the sense that the waiver situation that had recently came up this past spring with the forcing teachers to, it was sort of that, you don't have to, but we'd like you to sign this waiver of code of silence, so to speak. And it's, I think that's what makes me that much more skeptical, because I think some of the information coming from the D E S C and this initiative is been suspect. And I think people are asking questions, but the answers are still not there. And I think that's where people, it just drives that passion that, I don't think, I don't know. I don't, generally speaking, it was my view, and I'd like to be interested in hearing your perspectives. I think people are nervous as to what is being presented more so than, you know, and just more so than anything else. I think it's the tool before us, which opens up the assessment, the other assessment pieces. But I think that's where the anxiety and concern arises.
They also aligned it to, well, they were saying that if we institute that, this children will have it first through 12th grade. They'll have it 12 times. And they said that the, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. I'll have to let it go. I forgot. I'm going to have to, do you know what I was thinking, Mrs. Brusad?
Were you referring to the Park leading, pushing kids more towards the AP courses?
Yes, thank you. That's exactly what I was thinking.
We were, we were thinking that that track might not be appropriate for every student. And is it necessary to go that way for every student? Sure, you want to have high expectations. But I have to echo Mrs. Kane's comment that I walked in with one set of beliefs and then I walked out and I thought my head was going to explode. A lot to take in. It was great to hear the pros and cons of both sides. And then the biggest piece of all was the whole issue of the high-stakes testing, how much testing is appropriate. Again, I think we all recognize that you got to do some assessments of kids, because how else are you going to know, are they learning? But what is the appropriate amount and what should it look like? That's the big piece in my mind, the big question. So it'll be interesting to follow this. I'm glad that I went. It was very helpful for my own education. It was interesting to see some Wilmington parents there. And again, I saw Mrs. Kane's comment that they did represent us very well and I was very appreciative of hearing their beliefs, because they are our constituents.
It was very, it was interesting. I'm glad that we went to, and I'm hoping that there's more definitive information at our summer conference, sorry, at our conference in November. Yeah, I'm hoping so. Which, I'll just take a moment here to pause and tell people, if you got the notice about the conference and you wish to go, you should send in as soon as possible, because we get a discount of quite a bit of money if you sign up early. And you can, we, that we would have to transfer. But also for the hotel, if you want to be in that hotel, you can cancel up to two days before if you can't make it in the end. So it's worth it to get your hotel room right away. If you can do that, that would be great.
Anything on the conference, it's just a wealth of knowledge concentrated into a couple of days and it's, you just, I just gain so much and have that ability to network, to be able to, I, you know, I have no problem networking, so.
Exactly. All right. Thank you. Let me see. Our new business here. Okay, we're on new business and we have a vote on the nurses' contract that we did speak about in executive session. And so I would entertain a motion for, to approve the memo. Oh, let me first say that the nurses have ratified this agreement among themselves. So I would move, have someone move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Wilmington School Committee and the nurses for the 2015 to 2018 nurses' contract. Okay, Mr. Mullis.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Wilmington School Committee and the nurses for the 2015 through 2018 nurses' contract.
Second, Mrs. Bonnisch. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business, student handbooks.
Yes, you have in your packet the high school, Wilmington High School and the Wilmington Middle School student handbooks. As you know, there's Chapter 71, Section 37 of Mass General Law requires there to be at least for 912, a handbook. And so each year in the spring, the school counselors are supposed to gather together to review handbooks and then submit those to the school committee for their review and approval. We have Ms. Peters and Mr. Sheen here, representing the high school and the middle school. If folks have any questions specifically about either of the handbooks.
I think we might have some questions.
Sure.
So would one of you come up here and one on this side, if you don't mind? Or if there's two seats that side?
We got two right there.
Two, that's perfect. Thank you. I think as we were reading through them, there were some areas, we just had some questions for clarification. So should we do the, we'll go up. So we'll take the middle school first? That will be good. Okay, does anyone, would anyone like to start with the middle school?
I just have a question.
Mrs. Burns.
In going over the handbook, I know that we have policy with regards to electronic devices. Is, at the end of this, is there a signature page, like acknowledging that the parents, that they understand the policies and they acknowledge it? Or do we create a similar kind of contract, saying they acknowledge, yeah, these are the electronic device policies?
There is, on the second and last page, there's an acknowledgement form to be in, for the student, parent-student handbook. So that, in the past, has covered all policies within the handbook.
My only concern is photographs being taken during school hours that may not necessarily be used immediately to post, but may after do that. And that's where I think my, it falls on, you know, that, that.
Yeah, I do understand. It would be easy enough to add a section, either a section to the acknowledgement form or an additional form, although.
I don't want to take away from the ability for teachers to maybe introduce those devices in the classroom, but, you know, have a clarifying understanding between student and, you know.
I see no issue with adding either language into the acknowledgement form or adding a, an additional form to clarify that they also understand the technology, the electronic device policy.
Okay, and the proper usage.
Proper use, yeah. Well, I, is the proper, would you want the proper usage in the blurb that we have summarizing the policy? Or would you want that in the acknowledgement? Or both?
Well, I would suggest, what I would recommend is some, is encompassing the recognition of when it's appropriate, as opposed to when it's not appropriate. But I would, I would defer that conversation maybe between you and Mrs. Gerard, if not, you know, superintendent alike, to discuss what would be a reason, what would be reasonable that would encompass the concern, but also allow the ability for devices of that sort to protect the student body, but to also, you know, protect the ability to utilize it for classrooms who, you know what I mean?
The fine line between approved educational use and what students might otherwise use them for within the school day.
Exactly.
I think needs to be clarified. That's something that we could do fairly easily and fairly quickly, I believe.
Okay. Very good. I think it would, as I said, I would defer to what the appropriate.
Yeah, we also have some work to do this summer. And we've already had conversations with Neil Ellis about this, too. Is, we have some work to do on our acceptable use policy and we have some work to do, we don't currently have a social media policy, but to draft and have that go to the subcommittee over the course of the summer and eventually to the full committee to really make sure that our AEP is up to date and to create a social media policy that would address a number of issues around social media use. But would also have the ability to have parents, right now we have parents decide if we can release pictures to the press. Social media adds a whole new layer to that. So we want to make sure the parents know that if they check this box, that if, you know, if an administrator or a teacher takes a picture on a field trip or so forth, that there is an acknowledgement that they either opt in or opt out of having those pictures posted on social media. So that will be part and parcel of what I envision. And then we may just do some updates based on that. But we do have some work to do in that area, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Carroll. I found on the policy committee, we were going to put something about the eighth-grade field trip in the handbook.
It's in, it's the last page.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yep. Oh, geez, there it is. Okay, good. I was at everything else except for that. Good. All right, that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brusad?
I have two questions relating to the schedule and student teams. So in the handbook, can you give us an illustration of the master's schedule for all three grades, the middle school? And then there is a paragraph describing the student teams. My first quick question for rising seventh and eighth graders, when can families expect the new schedules and new house assignments to be in hand?
Within the next, I would say, five days. Report cards went today.
Went out today.
Went out, they were mailed today. So the families should be receiving those in the next couple of days. And we had a couple of last-minute tweaks that we had to do to the scheduling and to the redistribution on the teaming. So we didn't want to hold report cards up. So I would say that within, I'm hopeful tomorrow, worst-case scenario, Friday, we could get something rolling that way. And then for rising sixth graders, you know, coming in from the intermediate schools, I'm hopeful for early next week.
Okay, we've got a lot of eager kids out there.
I am aware, yes.
Including mine, who asks every day. The other question I had relating to the illustration of the master's schedule, when you folks had presented to us what the new tweaks to the schedule would look like, there was some discussion of intervention and enrichment blocks. When I look at this, I say, jeez, that's a jam-packed schedule. When would a kid have time for those?
So the, what's presented in the handbook is the bell schedule. So the intervention blocks would be during the universal, pardon me, the UA time. Unified arts time. Sorry, it's late. And that would not be a scheduled in the child's schedule. It would be more of a, hey, let's go work on this particular math issue for 30 minutes during gym or during art or during whatever, as it rolls through. There's a lot of work to be done this summer in how to present that in the best manner. And I think that as we transition from Mr. Olson to Mr. Gerard, it would be premature for me to answer fully on how that might roll out. But it would be during unified arts block.
Okay, now, it would be safe to assume that if a child is pulled out for either intervention or enrichment during the UA time, that there would be a method for them to make up that UA time? So it wouldn't affect that grade?
It shouldn't, it wouldn't affect the grade at all anyways. We currently do have students who are pulled out for different services during their UA times. And what the teachers and the administration understand is that we can't penalize a kid for something that they're not there because they're told not to be there. If they are where they are supposed to be, then there is no penalty to their grade. So, for example, if they're working on an art project and they get pulled out for speech and language services, they're not graded on that piece that they miss in the art class. They're graded on the things that they're there to complete. My assumption is, and again, there's a lot of work to be done over the summer, my assumption is it would work on the same, that same level of understanding between teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Burns.
Point of clarification. And I may be misunderstanding this, with the interventional blocks, it was my understanding back in the spring, and if you could just clarify the changes or the thought process that may have occurred between how it was presented. And I knew it was conceptual and now, that it was my understanding that there would be, that block, I didn't remember if it was the UA or whatnot, that they, there were certain students who would have that, as opposed to in art class, have that as support services. It was supposed to be billed upon those students who may be struggling. And I believe the discussion was, certain, certain, it would be certain groups of students, but it would be specifically designated, as opposed to a pull-out situation. You know what I mean?
I.
Am I thinking of something else?
I don't remember the presentation being that way.
I think that you might be thinking about the sixth-grade math block, the additional math block, which would be scheduled. This intervention block really will flex based on student needs. So a student may need a specific intervention for several weeks, and this would be the time to do that. And then whatever the goal of the intervention.
So it's a short, a short-term intervention flex thing?
Right, not a full year long.
Like additional support?
Right. But the sixth grade, we have that additional math block, which is scheduled in. It's an actual class. So maybe that's what we were thinking.
It may have. I'll have, I'll go back and review that. I just, just so that it's trying, you know, it's going from that concept to completion area, where things are tweaked and understanding the hurdles that you may have in that process.
The intervention enrichment block program was always designed to be, always, in my understanding, was always designed to be and presented to be very temporary for kids who needed something for, to get over a hump, to deal with a particular hurdle. Or to enrich themselves in an area that they had an interest in. So it was, in my understanding, it was never a scheduled piece in their schedule, in their best, bell schedule. It was maybe once a week out of an art class or a gym class, or once a cycle. Depending on the teacher who could offer the intervention or enrichment, depending on the group of kids who might have similar needs or wants, and how that works out is, has to be fluid, or else it won't, it becomes just another rotation in the student's day.
How is that? How is that, just for, again, point of clarification and, and development, how is that determined as to who uses that block, or pullout when it pertains to the academic, academic support, as opposed to speech or something else?
Well, it would be one of our tier two interventions, so there would be the IST, which would be the student support team, or individual success team.
Would it fall the, under the D cap, just for?
It could, it could, absolutely. So, it would become, if a student was recommended out of the IST, they, it would certainly be, something that would be in the D cap, or, or under the D cap. Or if it may be that the English teacher realizes that there's a handful of kids in, in her class that are struggling with a particular concept, it might be as informal as that. Again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the, on the parameters for, for this, but I think that it's, Mr. Olson's, if I can speak for him, because he's not here, but I think Mr. Olson's idea was that this, this has to be flexible enough to make it something that would be impactful in a short term, and then the students can go back to the generalized population, or their, their regular scheduled class.
Because my, my only concern is communicating that effectively and clearly to parents, because it is nuanced to the services we, we're offering in district, and it's making sure that, because you don't want Johnny coming home saying, he wouldn't let me take gym today because he put me in a class, but, you know what I mean?
Well, absolutely. I think that this doesn't work if we don't communicate it well.
Well, exactly.
Absolutely, it will not work at all, so I think that that point is very, very well taken.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sheen.
I have to piggyback onto that. Having been a teacher, and having seen what scheduling can do to, to programs, what I don't understand is how, if I'm a teacher, and I'm teaching my English class, and I know that there's some kids who need some extra help, they may be in two or three of these blocks, or not in any of them, and I may have classes during that time, so I just don't understand the, how you're gonna be able to match the kids with the teachers.
Again, there's a lot of questions that I can't answer fully, however, the, one of the benefits of the middle school schedule is that all of the grade level teachers have the same periods as prep periods or duty periods. So, for instance, all of the sixth grade would have period three as a unified arts block, so the sixth grade academic teachers would have that as a, as a, as a non-teaching block. And so, the, there is flexibility within the day in that manner.
That's good, because that's what I, that's exactly what I was, I, I didn't realize that. And so, that takes care of that problem, in a sense, yes, Mrs. Buras.
But if, if it's an academic teacher's planning period, but now they're, they may be the one who's supervising a group, a small group of their kids that need intervention, the only time to do it is the UA block, then are they losing their planning block?
They would be, it would be in place of a duty period, so that we still get their prep period, their planning period for the day.
Which is similar to what Mr. Olson did, he did that this year. It was a lot less structured than I think what it'll be evolving, it was called the teacher empowerment time, but it was basically a time where he freed them from duties to allow them to do this other work, so I, I see this as being pretty similar to that. So, in exchange for doing a duty, you're providing that additional tier two support to the, to the.
Or enrichment.
Or enrichment, yeah.
If there was an interest.
Had Mr. Olson seen this successfully done, or is this a, a good idea he came up with, once he saw the school?
I think, I mean, I think there were elements of, from very diff, with forty plus years of administrative experience, no doubt Mr. Olson's seen a lot of different versions, so I think he's seen elements of this work. I think one of the things that, you know, he's well known for is being able to provide these initial supports for struggling students, or high achieving students, and I think he saw this as being a way to be able to do it within the constraints, if you will, of the middle school schedule.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask you about on page fourteen, we have student teams at the top, and it didn't, it didn't clarify for me how, I know we're making changes, and we're not gonna have the three houses the same way, but I thought that, I guess I thought that we had talked about the fact of the teams, and how the teams were, were going to work next year, and that the same kids in a team wouldn't necessarily have the same teachers, they might cross over teams, did I misunderstand that?
I think that what we, what, what I had always, always envisioned was that we were still keeping teams, so we wouldn't keep the kids in the, in the towers for the three years, but we would redistribute them, but they would be on teams. The current sixth and seventh graders voted on team names at the end of, very end of the school year, and I, forgive me, I don't remember which ones won at this point, so I don't want to speculate and get it wrong. But, they will be on teams, they're just being redistributed into three, three different teams, so going from sixth to seventh, we take all three hundred-ish kids, rebalance, and give them, it, put them back into teams of one hundred-ish. The, the exact number, numbers, I don't have off the top of my head. To redistribute, rebalance, and to identify that sometimes students might feel that they need a change, and also to promote that sense of community that has been indicated when kids come to the high school, and they still don't know that whoever, they went to the west, and the other kid, child went to the north, and they were in different houses at the middle school, and they never saw each other. So, we're trying to build that sense of community as well. So, they're still teams, I think that there is a, a missed couple of words in the paragraph that was pointed out to me this evening, that the word houses should all read as teams in that paragraph.
Okay.
And so, that's something we can certainly correct, in fact, I, I already did very quickly while I was sitting in the gallery. So, that should re, be reworded, and, and it has been.
So, you're planning to go through, say, let's take the sixth grade going into seventh, you're planning on going through all six hun, uh, three hundred kids, and deciding that they might need this kind of instruction, this group, but.
I.
You aren't doing this yourself, are you?
Uh, no, oh lord, no. I have a fantastic group of folks that work with us, the guidance staff, and Mr. O'Brien, the other sister principal at the middle school, have done yeoman's work on this. And what, there is, luckily, we live in an age that technology can do a lot of the work for us, so I hit a button and produced a couple of lists, and then the five of us sat and looked to make sure that there was gender balance, that there was balance on ability, there was balance on personality, and then we also looked for students who may have need to be near other students, or need to be away from other students, and we had long conversations about it, and it, I believe that we have produced nine sets, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't take credit for the sixth grade, because I didn't do that, but six sets of balanced, well-structured teams for next year.
Something just on that, on that particular subject. So, you're accommodating students that are looking for change, on the other side of that coin, do you accommodate students who may not adjust to change well, and keep them in the same team?
Yes and no, so that there were some, some conversations with, with parents and families about what the expectations were, and what they were hoping for, especially being told coming to the school they were gonna be with the same group. However, it, it's also important to note that our teaching staff turns over considerably, and so it's not the same team, if you will, going into that next year. And based on our issue with last year, when we had the two teams, two, in the eighth grade, that was happening anyways, where we were taking three teams and turning them into two. So, we have spoken to families and dealt with individual needs as they have come up. Not a lot of them have come up, I think that we've been very transparent about the process in doing this, and so I would hope that if people had, had an issue that they would have spoken to me, or to Mr. Olson, or Mr. O'Brien, or the guidance staff. And when it has come up, we've considered what they're asking. Generally, it's not about the team, it's about other students, and who they feel comfortable being around, and who they don't feel comfortable being around, and we are able to accommodate most of that.
As you were saying that, I wonder if it just, it occurred to me that, I wonder if it makes sense to, at some point, if you're changing them every year anyway, phase out the idea of houses and teams?
Yeah, the idea of houses has, for all intents and purposes, been eliminated. Teams, though, is a pretty core structure of the middle school model, and is what makes it effective, because you have the, the teachers all working together as part of the teams, that, that's kind of a core element to the middle school model, but the house structure, for all intents and purposes, has been eliminated.
Do we have any other questions, Mrs. Carroll?
I just have a clarification. On page twenty-one, the cafeteria, it says alternate lunch, sandwich, and milk, that should be what kind of sandwich you're gonna get. I think there's only one certain kind of sandwich that you get if you're over ten dollars.
I will have to read it again, I, we can certainly.
I just didn't want parents to misunderstood if their kid's only getting a cheese sandwich, but this says a sandwich, they might expect that kid to get like a ham and cheese, or turkey and cheese.
That's, again, very easily to change, we'll do that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? It sounds great, we hope it works. We're, we're rooting for you.
I need all, all the rooting we can get.
And we appreciate your coming here tonight.
Absolutely.
Getting back here tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, our next is the high school. Do we have any questions on the high school?
Actually, I have one question from the middle school, I'm sorry, I didn't even, about the DC contract on the back page. I noticed that the parent doesn't have to sign that, is that something that the parent?
So, this was the identical contract from last year, so I don't have an answer for that, I can certainly find out, and we can adjust if need be. So, that, again, super easy to fix, that's, so, we can do that.
Thank you.
One of the things, I'll start, I couldn't find it in the high school parent handbook, and I'm not sure if it's necessary in the high school level, but the chain of command, we had, it's in the beginning of the middle school.
I saw that, I, I could include that.
Oh, okay, it isn't that good.
I did see that in the, in the, in the middle school handbook. I also saw the calendars, which I'd like to insert as well.
Oh, yes, that's right, that was good. Okay, oh, all right, great, thank you.
So, I like how you put in that every child, I'll go back to cafeteria, because obviously that's my work, that you have to take a fruit and vegetable, I think every handbook should have that in there, to have the parents know that that's, you know, what the lunch is considering, and what we're gonna be to ask of the kids to take during the lunch program. So, I like that, Mrs. Peters, thank you.
That was it. Tell him how.
I've never seen that, I've seen the handbook before, so I was very pleased with that, I was very, very pleased.
But I understand we have to get them to eat the fruit and vegetables.
I don't have to eat it, just as long as the parents don't say, why do you make my kids take this?
You have to offer, not serve or force eat.
Right.
We just have to offer.
Also, they don't have to take it?
They have to, yes.
You don't have to hold them down, anything? Right, right. What a waste, what a shame, if they're not eating it, like I get.
They do.
Mrs. Buras.
If it's on their plate ten times, they'll eat it.
We have great, great things for them to take, and, believe it or not, kids do take it, they do eat healthy, when it's offered, and cut up right, and everything, so, it's cut up.
Yeah, that's, that's key, too, excellent. Okay, Mrs. Buras.
Am I correct in remembering, we don't print out copies of the handbooks, either high school or middle school, and hand them out to all kids anymore, it's on the website?
Correct.
Okay.
I have one eas, very easy question, and another I just need you to pick your brain on, in, with respect to what Mrs. Buras just asked, is the signature page then expected to be downloaded for a sign, and they hand it in, is that how that works? Is a sign off, isn't there, isn't there a sign off page acknowledging the?
We have a sign off.
The last page, sign off sheet?
Right.
Is that what, what, how that works then? Okay, sorry, it's.
We are, we, we have copies in the office if the kids don't download them, but we do have them.
I was, I was just curious if there was any, any additional piece. My other question to you pertaining, we, we, why would, I would say, this past year we kind of looked at the electronic device policy, Mr. Mahoney was very kind to kind of collaborate with us with regards to it. Can I just, only, only because I, I saw this, I was curious to see, in this first year, how that policy has or has not, have you found any kind of change with regards to what you encountered?
We have not, we have not had a lot of cell phones come to us.
Good.
So, it's either working, or they're using cell phones more in class as for instructional purposes.
Really, okay, I was just curious, and I, I'm sorry, not to digress off the topic at hand, but thank you, I just.
I have a couple of questions. One is on page seventeen, it talks about the superintendent will establish guidelines that are in keeping with the above, and provide for the review of the content of all student publication prior to the distribution. I didn't see them this year, because we weren't actually in the library, but we used to have the, do they still do the student little booklet? Do we still have that? That, that used to be in the library, and I forget the name of it, they would write it, they do, had written, and it had cartoons, and it had.
Oh, the scrapbook? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about.
Student magazine?
The student magazine, yes. Do we still have that at the high school? It was a student magazine?
Oh, the expressions magazine.
Yes.
Yes, we still have it. They usually publish it online, though, now.
Oh, okay, that's why I haven't seen it, so if they publish it online, we could see it under the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, I used to really enjoy that. And the other thing is, I just wanted to check and see, you might not know that this is in here, that the superintendent looks over the written things beforehand, so, yeah. I don't know if we're doing a lot, having been an English teacher, I like anything that we can be showing what the kids are able to do, I think that's great. Okay, and the next page on eighteen, you actually just answered that, that we, we know that we don't have many of these devices that the kids are doing, and the ten days out of school expense, suspension, we haven't had anything like that.
No serious problems at all this year.
Excellent, okay. And down on page thirty-three, on the tardy violation, am I reading this right? That they have one day in school, if they do it the first time, they have two detentions, but if they do it the second time, one ISS and parent must accompany? Does that, that doesn't mean the parent has to go to ISS, does it?
That would solve the problem.
That would definitely stop the tardy.
I love the way that is worded, but I think it can't be exactly what I'm thinking. And two days.
I think the parent must accompany the student the next time they're tardy to school.
Okay.
So.
So, have we had a lot of that?
No.
Do we, does it work in the tardy? Because I just don't think that would work. But shame on the parents for not doing it, if it doesn't work, it's because they don't come. But I'm wondering, what happens, what do your assistants do when they don't come?
I think they just go to the third offense, two days ISS.
Okay, and then.
We don't generally have a huge problem with tardiness either.
Oh, okay.
There are, there are probably, we have students who have some medical issues that are tardy all the time, but they do have doctor's notes.
Oh, all right.
So, we don't usually have a, a huge problem with tardiness.
Okay, and then my other thing is, because I was on the subcommittee, page fifty-seven, and I almost think this is one of those areas where it's very, it's hard to get people and I almost think this is one of those areas where it's very, it's hard to get people, because I know we're all trying to make money for our favorite organizations, and it's hard to have people adhere to some rules sometimes, but, um, are they, these rules, do we give the PACs or any of the athletic groups this, a copy of this specifically, so that they know what our fundraising policy is? Mrs. Burns?
I'm sorry, I should wait until, um, what, I just think that Ms. July may should be appropriate to respond to that, I'm sorry, I just, I was just gonna add that, I think.
Oh, right, that's, I was moving towards that.
I know, forgive me, I, I, I told God, forgive me.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I don't think that it currently happens, hardly, I don't think that booster groups currently get any type of, uh, copy of anything on.
We did give them this year, and we revised it, um, a document that says raffles and, um, you know, both cash and noncash, and working with, uh, the town clerk, we, um, drafted a, uh, document that kinda tells them what they can and cannot do, and that was distributed to, um, all the schools for the PACs, as well the athletic director for all the, you know, booster groups and so forth, so, it's probably.
Um, I particularly would like to see that, um, well, first of all, no money collections could be held without specific consent of the superintendent, so.
We do get, we do get all the permit forms, fundraising forms, from all the different organizations, and, um, it doesn't say with the consent of the superintendent or designated, but in the interest of full disclosure, I have designated Paul to review those.
Good choice. Um, the one I'm particularly interested in is no students will be involved in door-to-door sales for fundraisers, I, I think in this day and age, that's really got to be, um, adhered to, and, um, the other thing about this is, I have actually seen through my own family, less and less of this, so I think maybe this is already taken care of, but the idea that it should be voluntary and that students aren't required to make a minimum of like twenty dollars worth or twenty, I think that's really important, so, um, God, so those are all I had, oh, and I love these, it just. No, does this go online when we put it online? Wow, that's impressive, yeah, and I love the, um, oh, and I just mentioned this, I thought this was fantastic, the photographer is one of our teachers?
Yes.
On the back here and the front, the pictures are really fantastic, so that's good. Yes.
Rank in class, that's weighted by what their, the kids are taking, AP honors? Class rank, okay.
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate both your hard work and hope that you have some relaxing time this summer, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we approve it, I believe?
Yeah, you do, sorry.
Do we have to do it one at a time, or can we do it, uh?
We should probably do one at a time. All right, I'd entertain a motion to accept the hi- high school handbook for twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. Mrs. Carroll? Okay, Mrs. Burad?
Second.
Second, all's in favor, unanimous, all right, and I'd accept a motion to accept the Wilmington, the Wilmington Middle School Student Parent Handbook for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, Mrs. Burad, so moved, Mr. McIlis? Second, all's in favor, unanimous. I realize I'm, I'm going this way tonight, I have to start moving this way.
I don't even raise my hand anymore.
Oh, don't you love having someone on here who's gonna tell me, I'm glad to hear it?
That's what she was saying next to me.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Bjork, we're going to go to the next item, which will be the elementary report card. Superintendent?
Yes, I'm actually going to turn this over to, uh, Dr. Burnham, and I think joining her tonight are Mrs. Mackless and Mrs. Cornell.
Oh, please join us, next to Mrs. Burad.
As part of the work of the literacy plan committee, um, one of the task groups, um, revised the standards-based report cards for the elementary grades to reflect the language of the new standards, um, and that's what you have in your packets for grades one through five.
And just to add, you made this transition to math already, current?
It happened previously.
Yeah, so this is, I think it was always intended that, obviously, there would be, I thought, we would follow suit with ELA, we're just, that's where we are right now.
That's where we are, working on it, that's on these papers.
This is what you have right here on the newspaper, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? First of all, my push, my thing is, wow. Big report card, um.
I wish they had this on my kids' table.
Grade one. Grade one has a section for, um, library media, but do we have, we have libraries for all the schools in grade one, okay, make sure, 'cause at one point we did not, so that's very.
The only schools that we don't have, um, librarians with the full library media program would be at the early childhood centers.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think it's interesting, too, because the first time my granddaughter told me she got a C and she was excited, and she had a big smile on her face, and I went, I can't believe you're excited over a C! But we have a new, it goes the opposite way, C is consistently exceeds grade level stances at the top, so she's trying to get a C, my parents would put me in the corner if I got a C. So, so, um, the evaluation keys are interesting, why do we make a change in grade four to five, that's a different evaluation, they go into the ABCs? And I'll let the, the group representative, um, talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
The first thing I want to say is, is that this represents a large group of teachers that have worked diligently on this for many, many weeks, and, um, over the course of this year, and I think that, um, if you'll notice, and I'll, I'll get to the grade four and five, um, that, for example, in the grade one, there's a special section on foundational skills, and that special section on foundational skills really lays the groundwork as espoused in the Common Core and ties in beautifully with the work that had been done prior with the kindergarten report card, so we're meshing, we're kind of interweaving everything, so if you kind of think of K really through three as one segment, and four and five, because it's, um, two years where there's a lot of standardized testing, as Ms. Burns had alluded to, um, i- in the past, it had been looked at as kind of a transition to middle school on the intermediate level, so what the four or five teachers wanted to do was to make it mesh with third, meaning third kind of evenly woven to it, and fifth kind of evenly transitions into sixth grade, but the notion of letter grades are still being kept in math at the current time, so we didn't want to, we wanted to kind of be lockstep with math as much as we could, because really, ELA and math are driving the bus for everything, so we're kind of meshing, we're, I don't want to say we're one step behind math, but we're kind of moving in tandem in a way that the teachers feel comfortable with and that doesn't overwhelm the students, that is really our goal. I think four or five meshed well in the sense that the, the standards for writing are really from K on up through twelve, it's the same ten standards for writing in the Common Core, and our goal was, rather than having fifty-nine different boxes for ELA, that we would pick the ones that we felt were most critical. I'm gonna also turn it over to my, my fellow lead teacher, Linda Cornell, to add anything else that you can recall from the four or five work.
Well, um, I know that we had a lot of discussion with the four or five teachers in terms of, you know, a standards-based report card, once you attach a letter grade, it's not really standards-based, but I think that that needs to be a transition process for them, and I think that, um, you know, that's kind of a work in progress, they weren't quite ready to let go of it, so I think that, you know, that that discussion will continue over the course of this school year and thinking into next school year.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Burad, did you have a question, or you, oh, Mrs. Burns?
Go figure.
Go figure on the side.
I have to, it's just state, I just like to state, um, my opinion that I think, um, that have that go between the fourth and fifth grade and the transition between letter grades, 'cause we already know where the, as you mentioned, the anxiety behind assessments are, I think that transition, there's one less transition, anxiety piece with transitioning to that grade and that, that own achievement that students put for, on themselves, but do it in an environment they are most familiar with, and I, I think that's important, especially, with regards to the trans, the, the dips that we see, um, from third grade going into fourth grade and, and targeting those areas and, you know, um, previously, so I think, in a very general speaking, that this transition, which I think is necessary, I think that's a perfect time, and whether or not you, as you just have that discussion and it propels it further, I think it's optimal to have it in the same environment as opposed to the transition of a new school and, and new responsibilities and, you know, uh, higher demand academic-wise, I think, you know, it, it just bodes well, especially in the transition from fifth grade into six, it's one less, um, piece to, to have to navigate, you know, less navigate, I, I, I'm not explaining myself, forgive me, but you know, uh, the less anxiety going forth, one less piece, so, thank you for that work.
One of the things on the report card, I noticed on, um, grade one report card, which really makes me feel good, that, um, you have them starting right away, doing things the right way, like when they're writing, and, um, and you've created a, where was that? Oh, it's on that next page, sorry, um, when they write in opinion, this is just for grade one, little first graders, six years old, and you want them to write an introduction, state and support their opinion, and provide a conclusion, and that's what we want grade twelve writers to, to do, so I'm really pleased that we're starting off the grade one kids, like, I don't know if some of you, this happened to you, but we, our children, when my children were first going to school, they let them do spelling words, whatever way they, they could sound it out, so that it looked like the word, and then they could say the word, instead of making them write the right word, that drove me nuts, so I think these report cards are reflecting, doing it the right way, right from the beginning, and moving up.
We paid a lot of attention to how it was folding from one grade into the next, we kind of divided into grade level groups, and we did our report cards, we had them posted across the, um, you know, the board in the room where we were working, and we tried to see how one flowed into the other, and as a result of that, having, we had, um, one through five on one board, we made some changes so that there was, it made sense of how it was flowing from one grade to another.
Exactly, and so now have the teachers, the, you're going to start this next year, yeah, have the teachers, do they sign off on it, or do they?
Well, I think that, um, one of the things that we have in play is how this is gonna be unfolded, certainly to the, the parent community, as well as it's, it's a, it's a work in progress, I mean, the, the, the teachers have, have had this information shared out, but for example, it may be that as we move forward, it may be that some of these things may be graded in, so as to not promote huge amounts of anxiety initially, which is the same process that they had done with math, where, for example, for the first term, it may be one of these types of writing is not expected right away, especially for first graders, so that still is in negotiation pieces for the shading, but all the teachers do know, this has been shared out in, in staff meetings, our next steps really involve how we're gonna share it out to the larger parent community.
I think for us as a school committee, sometimes we, like, we get this, and this is something we'll be watching for, and, um, um, Ms. Delau- Ms. Delau has actually touched upon it with us, that we don't get the, afterwards, we see this now, and we say this is great and we'll approve it, but we don't get the results back to the school committee, um, because once it gets working, it's like we're onto something else, so we would look forward to finding out if you come back at the end of the year and tell us how these report cards are working and what, because that's important, I think it's important to all of us, too, that it is a work in process, and, yeah, work in process, and if something needs to be changed, we need to change it, and we would totally support you in that, so, um, I think we would look forward to seeing how these report cards do next year, especially since I think everybody has somebody in the school system somehow, so, um, we want to make sure this is right, report cards are really important to parents, and some, and so for some of the students, or most of them, but, yeah, yes, do you have, no, oh, he's just looking at me.
No, I was actually, just.
Oh, yes.
Just offer my gratitude, appreciation to Dr. Burnham, Dr. Mackless, Mrs. Cornell, and the entire team that worked on this report card, it is a heck of a lot of effort, um, I think from myself personally, the most rewarding comment I heard was Mrs. Carroll's very authentic comment, I wish we had these when my kids were in school, because I think even though parents may be used to letter grades, when they see how much more information, and they may not realize at, at first glance, how much more information they have on where their child is, and they understand that, it will really help to engage them in the educational process.
Excellent.
And we've also talked about, um, putting together a document that, um, kind of explains the process for this and what it really means, so that the, the parents will get a sense of, you know, why, why it was developed this way and why it's important and what it means for their child.
Excellent. That's it, the parent communication, too, that's really important, really important, and, um, having people benefit from this, definitely, thank you, do we have any other questions?
I just had a quick question, it's not specifically about reading, but, um, and on the early grades, there's no effort grades in the last page, is that, um, it's only in fourth and fifth?
I believe that, um, the effort, you, you, you're talking about the effort, it's at the top, the teachers wanted it at the top.
But it's on the last page, there's no effort, um, there is on the grades.
Grade one.
Four and five, but not in one, two and three.
Oh, for health library and music.
Just on that last page.
Yeah.
It may be. Provide some clarification, the only revisions that were made here was, was with the ELA standards, there has been expressed interest amongst other teachers for other subject areas that they would like to be able to revisit the report card as well, um, but what you see in front of you is only a reflection of the changes in English.
And it, the evaluation key just does provide a, a level of effort? I didn't know, was that, was it that, I, just to clarify, um, I, I do see, like, I see the effort, like, in the technology piece kind of thing, but I, was that what you were referring to?
So, if you just look at the last page of grades four and five, each of those sub, categories, like music and phys ed, they have effort in each of the boxes, just in grades four and five, but not in one, two and three, so I just was wondering about that.
Different. But again, teachers at different grade levels and different content areas, having heard that the English standards were being revised, the report card was being updated, also wanted to have changes made, but there needs to be, um, discussion before we make changes, so that all teachers can contribute to the conversation, so we'll continue to work on, on that, but the focus this year was just for the ELA.
I recognize that, but just to piggyback, was that intent with that change, and I know that it'll be going up for the discussion, with the plausible intent, I should say, since it's yet to be discussed, get a, get away from the markings, the marking symbols piece of the effort and student responsibility, because that, especially like in the science and social studies where a, a grade can be offered per se, and, um, I'm just not sure with regards to the computers, with, those things are based on skill as opposed to knowledge, I mean, not to say technology isn't, 'cause it is, but, um, you know, like data for the state event, you know, eventually when those standards do come into play, I, I just didn't know, were they, was it in preparation to possibly just get rid of the symbol piece, or were they? Or were they trying it out? I wasn't quite sure.
Different teachers are feeling different ways and, and we really need to have some dialogue around it. For instance, the folks who worked on the revisions to the ELA standards felt really strongly about and ready to move in the direction of no letter grade for grades four and five. They really advocated for that. And we were ready to make that transition, except the math team hadn't had a chance to also have that same conversation. And we wanted to be sure that if we were going to make a change and transition away from including a letter grade, for instance, that we, we do that jointly, math and ELA. As far as the effort markings, again, that's, that's a conversation that's ongoing. And ideally, we'd like to get up to a place where we feel that we can move forward in a consistent manner. But there is a lot of dialogue still, still ongoing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Our next item would be professional development and curriculum review.
Yes, and I just want to first of all acknowledge the work again of Dr. Burnham in pulling this document together. Obviously, a lot of what you see here are things that she has, has led efforts. It's a shared responsibility amongst all of us for all the various curriculum and teams and committees that we have. But I think, as, as you said earlier today, it almost kind of takes your breath away how much, how many activities are occurring in this district and how much great work is happening. So I thank, thanks to Dr. Burnham, but also to all the folks that are identified in here as being not just leaders of various teams and committees, but also members, because they're, they're doing some really fantastic work.
I do have to, before we discuss this, I do have to mention that as I was going through it, I was, first I was amazed, then I was delighted. But I saw that Mr. Rogiro, yourself, the superintendent, Mr. Ellis, of course, Dr. Burns, names only, were all part of different groups. So you were part of the professional development as well. And I thought that was so unusual, at least we, I don't know that we've done that before here. And I think it's a wonderful show of leadership and support to the community of teachers that you're willing to do that and do all the work that it requires. So I did want to personally thank you all for adding yourself into these, because that certainly is not in your job description, I don't believe.
It's like all other duties as assigned.
Yeah, but it was, it's fascinating that you did that. So do we have any questions on this?
I just want to say, thank you so much. I just, even like the field trips and everything is right here, you know, and, you know, the professional development and special ed and everything we need to know is right here. Thank you, that's great.
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Brusad. And just to piggyback off what you've said, I think going forth though, it, I know for myself, it gives me more clear clarity with regards to the, seeing the results easier. And I think goes back to speaking to the, the follow-up to certain things that we as committee vote upon and, and, you know, I, I think it speaks directly to that and just, and again, always thank you for the, the clarification and the simplicity of the reporting piece so that it's easily understood by all levels of, all levels of, you know what I mean, of knowledge of education. So I, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I think that's what I'm excited about. I'm like, oh, I've got a good foundation for next year, you know? So.
Do you have any other? Well, it's very impressive and we all thank you.
I think when people sometimes think that, you know, educators, you know, show up at the beginning of the school day, teach for the day, leave at the end of the day, and of course, they have grading and planning, but there's so much more that they do, certainly here in Wilmington. And if anybody ever asks you about that, you have the document right here in the report too.
I forgot Mary Hood, she's, she's the chair of this. Yes. One of them also. So that means your whole administrative team has been the chair of one of these activities this year. And I really think that's notable, definitely. I, I'd like to ask one little question. I'm back to the pictures.
It is. Took that in early June.
Did you see the rainbow?
Was it early June?
Oh, my goodness. I hope the public sees this. Can, does this go online?
It's the report?
Yeah, the picture with the report.
The report.
No, does the report go online?
Yes.
Put it up.
Yeah. I think these are the things I'd like to remind the public, that if you could go on to our line, see what is there, you will be amazed at what's been accomplished this year, definitely. But I love these photographs, they were wonderful. Okay. Our next item of business is the financial report.
I'm going to turn that right over to Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you. In front of you have a financial report as of June 12th. As you can see, our appropriation of 35, 34.8 million dollars that, as of June 12th, we were 74,000 in the black. So that, that's good. We have a few more weeks to, to go to clean up all the, whatever other expenditures we are going through, any purchases we have money encumbered if we didn't use it and so forth. So we will end the year in the black. So I'm very, very happy with that. One number, MJ did ask a question of me, you'll see one number on the first page, long-term subs, looks like it's way over budget. Just as a point of clarification, yeah, we charge substitutes to that line item. So if a teacher or someone is on maternity leave or is exhausted this sick day or is left and has no more pay, the offset to that would be in that particular line item in that school. But the substitute that takes over for that teacher is either covering for the leave or, you know, replaces that teacher would kind of be, the cost would show in long-term subs. That's why that kind of, that line looks quite a bit over budget.
I think we were thinking a lot of babies were born in this district this year.
That too.
Does anyone have any comments on stimulus?
Just to follow up with, with regards to that line item. I, it may be a silly question, but from that line item, it's the pay rate, the, the daily pay rate for the short-term subs as well as the long-term subpay, that salary. Is there a determination as to what a, a long-term substitute, is there, is it, how is that determined? Is it, I don't remember seeing it.
There's established pay rate within the collective bargaining agreement for a long-term sub of $125 a day.
Oh, okay. I just, I was just curious, I don't, I'm not sure where.
Yeah, it kind of ramps up so many days, it's this rate.
Gotcha.
A few days this and a long term.
Sorry. It sounds a little more familiar now too, I apologize. Thank you very much.
And could I just ask you, on the first page at the bottom, it says incremental cost of move to the new high school for each of the technology integration, it says, all right, it's down below the last two, English teachers salaries, high school.
High school teachers had to work an extra day. So there's an extra day's pay.
Didn't even think of that. Okay, thank you. Do we have any feels? It's real set. Thank you. We can't go without complimenting you, Mr. Rogiro. Tonight's compliment night. You do a wonderful job for us and we're very appreciative. Okay, our next new business would be the SEEM FY16 budget.
Yes, and, and this is basically a requirement of the collaborative regulations that the school committees be, be made aware of and get to see the budget. The budget's approved by the board, and as you know, as superintendent, you delegate me to be the, the board representative to the SEEM collaborative. But they are required to share out their budget. So you have some information here that shows the budget as they are required by statute to present it to you in the categories that are required by the statute. But they've also given you some budget highlights here, if you're interested in understanding a little bit more about what made up the budget. And I think the other thing that's really important information is the third page, which shows the cost avoidance, that if we were not a member of the SEEM collaborative and these, these students were not placed at SEEM or we're not a member, what the differential would be. So it's showing your, the cost avoidance from being part of the SEEM collaborative.
So much.
And this is really more about tuition. That doesn't even speak to the savings that we get from doing collaborative professional development and taking advantage of many of the services that the collaborative provides.
I have to say, with regards to what you've just said, that the pie chart given, 44.86 and under their revenue is part of their, their revenue generated, 44.86 of it came from non-members, which is possibly telling. You know, you don't know what that, that's, the reason behind that, but that's a, that's a good chunk of revenue.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a testament to their programs really, that folks who are not even members of the SEEM collaborative feel that even though they may be a member of one or two other collaboratives, that SEEM has a program that's more, more, more fitting.
Any more, any questions on this? I'm just going to add another EFG to new business. And I'd like to make an announcement that the school committee held an executive session before this meeting. And we had two items of business in there that need to be brought forward. One of them is that we offered our superintendent, Ms. Delai, Ms. Delai, here I'm saying the wrong name.
You should be worried about your payroll.
Especially if I'm involved. And we, the school committee has offered her compensation for next year of 3.75%. And we're happy to say that she has accepted. And so we will have another excellent year with our superintendents. So we want to make that known. And secondly, the nurses contract, and we need to revoke that in public. So we, did we do this?
Didn't we do that?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, my goodness. I hope my children aren't watching this. It's been a long.
I tagged you earlier this morning.
Yes, yes, we did meet for both five hours today.
That's just me though. You gotta say five hours.
No. It was excellent. All right, so I'll add that to it. Our year, we're working on the handbook and we've basically finished the handbook today. So we're going to be working with that when we get into our retreat, which we hope to have in August. At the first meeting, when we come back in August.
28th, was it?
I think it's the 26th. Yes, and we wanted to make sure, this is actually going into other reports too. We, we hope that everybody will put that day aside, the 26th of August. And we kind of feel strongly that, that we all need to be at this retreat so that we have a good opening to the school year. And we'll give you a, beforehand, we'll give you an agenda so that you'll know what it is. But it's going to be something like from four to seven, something like this. We'll see, we'll give you all the details in the summer. We'll send that out. And our other meeting, and we're at, I'm going to stop here and say, public comments. We have to wait till Thursday to find out the public comments. We'll see them in the newspaper. Thank you. Okay, other reports. So we've, we may meet this summer, the policy subcommittee may have to meet this summer. And Ginny will let you know if that comes up. And so our subcommittee is basically finished and we'll have that for the August 20, 24th, right? 26th, 26th meeting. And there's no other subcommittee that's going on now, all right? Correspondence?
We have none.
We have none, oh, what a surprise. Okay, and does anyone have, before we leave for the summer, anyone have anything else they want to bring up? No, we want to leave for the summer. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Brusad, second? All is in favor. Unanimous, Kim, thank you.
He didn't want to leave.
Thank you, everyone. He wanted to stay.